Everybody ready to roll? I'd like to call this September 20th session of the Hoyoke City Council to order the clerk will call to roll, record those members present.
Bartley?
Here.
Brezneren? Graney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Leahy?
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Lopez?
Here.
McGee?
McGivern?
Here.
Roman?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon? Here. Valentine?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. And the city of Hoyoke.
Mr. President?
And the city council.
I just wanted to say, before we start, I just wanted to give a shout out to Counselor, Ward Three Counselor Bartley on his outstanding job yesterday sitting at the Hoyoke Day where there's hundreds of people, probably close to a thousand people from Hoyoke, so I just wanted to say, big props to you, Dave.
Oh, thank you, James, appreciate it. Well, thanks, thanks, guys, thank you.
Good job.
I would like to ask that we take a moment of silence for some of the, you know, individuals who probably lost their lives, that they did in Mexico, but also pending on Puerto Rico's situation. It's been a stress for many of us, and I think that we should deserve a moment of silence, if that's okay.
That's absolutely right, and also, we'd like to add since our last meeting as well, the hurricanes in Texas and Florida as well. We've lost a lot of wonderful people, and a lot of people have had their entire lives disrupted as a result of these incidents, so we could have a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two items laid on the table, if there's, those could stay on the table, or we could not keep them on the table for the moment. I know with respect to item two, if you'll recall, that was the item that came in late file, we asked it to go on the agenda for this particular meeting at the last meeting. I would think that that should probably end up over in ordinance.
Motion to remove item two from the table?
Motion's been made and seconded to remove item number two from the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Counselor Lisi, did you want to speak to this one?
No.
Okay. I would recommend that we send this over to the ordinance committee. This is a request from the planning board to begin a zone change process for some textual changes that they would like to make regarding, I believe it is signage, and under the statute they have to send it to us, and then we're supposed to send it back to them to allow them to have their hearing, and ordinance may also want to have a hearing if it wishes on this matter.
Motion to refer to committee ordinance.
Take it.
Motion's been made and seconded to send to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to suspend the rules and proceed out of order to public comment?
Second.
Second.
We don't need to suspend the rules because we're now at public comment.
That's the next item. Okay.
Next item on the agenda, so, great. So we are now at public comment, and we had three concerned citizens asked to speak to the city council this evening. First up is Jordan Lemire of 1035 Hamden Street. Jordan, welcome.
I'll keep this very short, because I know you guys got a full agenda tonight, but I'd like to speak on item number thirty-one, which is being introduced by Counselor Brezneren, Counselor Bartley, and Counselor Jordan, I believe you're on. Counselor Bacon, I apologize. This is kind of hits very home to me. I have called Mayor Morris a couple of years ago about the flags being lowered to half-staff. He's taking some big hits right now on it because of, it wasn't done on nine eleven. And the ordinance that's trying to be introduced is a, is to make it an ordinance, which is kind of illegal, because the only persons that can order a flag to be lowered to half-staff is the President of the United States or the Governor of the state. You know, nine eleven, as you know, I am a retired firefighter, I'm not making this political because of the budget, because of brownouts, whatever, that's a whole different fight for a whole different game. However, something has to be done in a city as great as Hoyoke to get the flags lowered, not only on nine eleven, but Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and any other national holiday when they should be lowered to half-staff. Last year, when I called the mayor on Veterans Day, when they weren't lowered, I was told that the person responsible was on vacation, and I offered to pick up the key and do it myself for no cost. I've put that offer out there again, and nothing, but, you know, I know you can't do an ordinance, I understand that, you know, even though it's into you, but there must be some way that, you know, not only the flags at City Hall, fire stations, police station, public buildings, but there are many city parks here, and, you know, it's just not right for a city so steep in the history as Hoyoke is not to have the respect of the flags lowered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matthew Yee of seventy-five Pearl Street, self Hadley.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't have a public comment.
Okay, you're here, you're all set? Okay, Mr. Yee's all set. Okay, next up is Patrick Presto of four thirty-four Pleasant Street, Hoyoke. Patrick, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to just more or less ask this council about the proposed Dunkin' Donuts on Hamden Street, if that was really the best option that you could come up with for that site. We recently moved to the neighborhood in May, we weren't aware of the meetings that took place about that Dunkin' Donuts, but just curious, was that really the best option? There's already a Dunkin' Donuts on North Hampton Street, Hamden Street is traffic-logged as it is, and people already speed on that road, there are already issues with that particular intersection. I really don't think Dunkin' Donuts adds anything to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor.
While I have it top of mind, first of all, Counselor Brezneren's not going to be at this meeting tonight, but he does have an order that somebody had spoken about earlier, so if we could take item number thirty-one.
Okay, we'll suspend the rules to go to that now?
Okay.
And just send it to committee, public service.
All right, so motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to go to item number thirty-one at this time, all in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President? Yes, Counselor? I'd like to be added to that, please. Okay, absolutely.
Mr. President, I'd like to be added also.
Sure, just let me read it, gentlemen, and then we'll get all the appropriate cosponsors on here. Order introduced by Counselors Brezneren, Bartley, Jordan, and Bacon, order that all flags controlled by the city of Hoyoke and on our property are always lowered to half-mass on September eleventh in remembrance of all those lost in this tragic terrorist attack on U.S. soil, adding Counselors Tolman and Graney as cosponsors. Motion would be to, I have a suggestion too.
There's a motion made to send it to public service?
Is that, was that your motion?
That's what Counselor President asked for.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to send to public service, is there a, second to that?
Second.
Second. I would like to add, send a copy to ordinance as well, if that's okay without objection, we'll add that also to it, because we have a pending item in ordinance relative to remembrances, dedications, namings, and we could perhaps put in a provision regarding, you know, as we all know, there's quite a number of flag raisings, lowerings, all kinds of things during the course of the year, and what's the protocols on all of those? And so when we have situations where the President of the United States and/or the Governor of Massachusetts have ordered these, as articulated by Jordan earlier, then we need to be making sure that those things are properly put into place. So first, I'd like to recognize the chairman of ordinance, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was only going to offer a friendly amendment to this particular order that we add to it and for all occasions in accordance with orders of the President of the United States or the Governor of the state, so that it wouldn't be just focused on one particular date, going to your broader context.
Okay, so there's a motion, excuse me, an amendment proposed by Counselor Bacon to add that in addition to September eleventh, that it be also for all occasions where the President of the United States, as well as the Governor of Massachusetts, have ordered that the flags be at half-mass. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, okay. All in fa, is there discussion of that amendment? Counselor Lisi?
Yeah, it's just unclear if it was supposed to be replacing the individual date of September eleventh and just blanket statement, so that we're not referring to that specific date specifically, or if it was going to be in addition to?
In addition.
In addition, because I, it's my general understanding, and I don't preach to be an expert, but my general understanding is nine eleven's an automatic every year, that one just all, will always happen, and then it'll be in all these other occasions.
Aye.
Yeah, okay. All right, so all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of referring to public service with a copy to the ordinance committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, okay. Mr. President? All right. I will recognize you after I recognize Counselor Sullivan, I did see him first. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to take late file B out of order.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules to now go to late file B and to also allow final action on late file B under the rules, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Late file B, that a proclamation be issued recognizing the actions of the three Hoyoteens whose quick thinking saved their mother's life, and that they be invited to the city council to be presented the proclamation, this is introduced by Counselors Sullivan and Graney. Motion on the floor is to adopt, I assume, to adopt.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan, you just want to briefly?
Briefly, these three young men responded very quickly, their mother, forty-five-year-old Hoyoke woman, had a severe stroke, life-threatening episode, their quick actions actually saved her life, and I think it's a, you know, great thing with everything that's been going on with the youth in Hoyoke to get these kids in here and recognize them for what they've done and what they've achieved.
Okay, any other discussion on late file B? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Mr. President? Counselor Graney has made a motion to suspend the rules to at this time take up late file A.
Second.
It's a, related to a traffic matter, okay? All in favor of taking up this item late file A now and to have a final action on this item, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Late file A introduced by Counselor Graney, order that the Hoyoke Police Department, the DPW, and the Hoyoke School Department collaborate to ameliorate the traffic jam outside of MedCaf School from seven forty-five to eight thirty in the morning as soon as possible. Traffic is tied up for up, for twenty minutes to a half an hour in the morning at this location.
Receive and adopt?
Receive, adopt, refer to the Hoyoke Police, the DPW, and the School Department?
That's fine.
Okay, there's a second to that, any discussion? Counselor Graney?
Yeah, this is problematic. Certainly, people are trying to get by, go to work in the morning, can't do it, that there's a line, double line going into MedCaf School, around the back and out, there's a problem if any safety vehicles, fire engines, or ambulances have to get by there, I don't think they're going to be able to do it, so I think that we should act on this, I think that the PD has to take care of this situation as soon as possible.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, late files A and B now dispensed with, we're now back to communications, we're at item three.
Receive and accept the minutes.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Item number three is the minutes of our September fifth, two thousand seventeen meeting, this is introduced to us by our city clerk, and the motion on the floor is to receive and approve these minutes of that meeting, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, under discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, item number four is a communication from State Representative Vega that was included in our packets, it's regarding regulations of the Massachusetts marijuana industry.
Motion received.
Motion's been made.
It's a fairly short, one-page letter, can you just read it into the record?
Well, we already received it all in our packets, I already read it, I think everybody, has anybody not read it, or you should have a copy?
No, I mean, like, just for the public's consumption of the letter.
It's two, it's actually two pages.
I thought that the letter was one page, but then it gave an outline of the different regulations.
There's a bunch of different questions. I'll read it into the record if majority of the council wants me to, but I would rather we didn't, but I will, I will do that if the majority wants that. Motion on the floor is to read the communication, is there a second to do that?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Raise your hand if you want to read this. Four, motion fails. Motion on the floor is that it be received, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, from Mr. McManus Superintendent, it's a letter regarding eight hundred Kellyway. He's hereby assigned to O'Connell Headquarters, Hoyoke Assessor's map, one seven seven lot seventeen, as requested. I believe what he's telling us here is that in accordance with section four, section seventy-nine dash one ninety-one of our ordinances, the address of eight hundred Kellyway is assigned to the O'Connell Headquarters, and I believe that's, there was, somebody had made an inquiry regarding an address change, or what was that eight hundred Kellyway, so.
The motion to receive?
Just receive, I think would be appropriate.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number six is also a communication from Mr. McManus, our superintendent, and this is regarding an address change request that's coming to change one eight one Appleton Street to one sixty-four Race Street. Mr. Dennis Uzaraga, who's the co-owner of the Cubit, he owns that building, as you know, at the corner of Appleton and Race, and he's requesting that the address be changed to a Race Street address, one sixty-four to be specific, from the current address of one eighty-one Appleton Street. This would require an ordinance change.
Refer to ordinance?
And the motion on the floor has been made and seconded to receive and refer to ordinance, okay? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number seven is a communication from Terry Shepherd, the Park and Rec Director, it's regarding the demolition of the Springdale Park Storage Building. In it, she asks us, informs us that the commission at their August twenty-third meeting is seeking a funding to tear down the storage building at Springdale Park. Obviously, this would have to come to us by way of a request from the mayor, and then there would be something for us to vote on at that point. Counselor Roman?
Mr. President, I have the word, Counselor, I just want to inform the council, I saw this letter, and there's actually through CBDG Improvement Day happening on October eighteenth where community members could volunteer, and I spoke with the mayor, and this is supposed to come down as part of that Neighborhood Improvement Day, so I think this is, I'm going to get official confirmation, because I saw this.
Just receive this at this point?
I would just say, just receive it, and what I'm going to do for the council is get official confirmation from the mayor and have him send a communication to ensure that this is really squared away.
Why don't we send a copy to the mayor then, so that we get the communication back?
Sure, she does address the original to the mayor with us getting the copy.
Yeah.
But we could also send a copy to the mayor as well, if we wish.
Motion received.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, under discussion, Counselor Lopez.
Counselor Roman, do you know which other building is coming down? There's like, there's two buildings sitting there, Springdale.
Yes, there's the storage, and then there's the old bathrooms.
Which one?
The storage, is what I was told is coming down, so.
How much is it?
Cost?
I could check, I'm going to get the confirmation, I'm just, because I saw this communication come to us, I called.
They don't know, they're asking the superintendent to investigate it.
All right.
The cost. Motion on the floor is to receive, we'll also provide a copy to the mayor as well, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to item number eight is a communication from Matt Mainville, who as we know is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. He's informing us that the commission has now voted to designate Michael Falsetti, who we know and respect well, he's a longtime member of the Housing Authority and currently their Vice Chair, to serve on the Community Preservation Act Board.
Motion received.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Suspend the rules, take up nine through eleven as package, they're all minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend our rules to take up items nine through eleven as a package, all in favor of that? Aye, opposed, so moved. Item number nine is the Board of Health minutes of June first and July sixth, two thousand seventeen. Item number ten is the Board of Fire Commission minutes of August sixteenth and August twenty-second, and item eleven is the Park and Rec Commission minutes of April twenty-fifth.
Received.
Motion's been made and seconded, all three of these items be received, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Mr. President, can we take twelve, thirteen, or fourteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, suspend the rules, take them together.
Second.
Second.
Okay, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Yes, please.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take items twelve through fifteen as a package, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number twelve is a petition of Selco Partnership Care of Verizon Wireless, a special permit to, requesting a special permit to erect a wireless service facility at three oh two Chestnut Street. Item number thirteen is a petition of Selco Partnership Care of Verizon Wireless to, for a special permit to erect a wireless service facility at one seventy-seven West Street. Item number fourteen is a petition of Selco Partnership Care of Verizon Wireless for a special permit to erect a wireless service facility at two two one seven North Hampton Street. And item number fifteen is a petition of Selco Partnership Care of Verizon Wireless for a special permit to erect a wireless service facility at five thirty-two Southbridge Street.
Refer to DGR, please.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive all four of these petitions and refer them all over to the Development and Government Relations Committee, any discussion, Counselor McGivern?
Do we have a report from the treasurer on the status of taxes or any arrears on utilities on these?
Let me ask, let me take a look. It does not appear that any of those checks have been done yet.
If we just send a copy to her, see if we can get them done?
Sure. So a motion has been made to also give a copy of items twelve through fifteen also to the treasurer, at least notifying her of the application and to have these four locations checked out in terms of tax compliance, and I believe that is standard process before we'll grant any of the permits, but we'll be sure to ask her in that event. So that motion was seconded, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, is there any other discussion before we send these to DGR with a copy to the treasurer? Counselor Bartley?
I think these require a public hearing?
I would think so, yes.
Man, solicitor? Just like, we did?
I'm almost certain I do, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just, I just want to put in my notes, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not a problem, okay. Motion on the floor therefore is that the four of them be sent to the DGNR Committee with a copy to the treasurer to seek the tax compliance and municipal charge compliance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number sixteen, item number sixteen is a petition of Jeanette Vega, she's seeking an extension of her street vendor license.
Receive and refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer this over to the ordinance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, President's Report, as you know, my favorite part of the meeting, and I wanted to take this opportunity to give you, hopefully for those that are interested in a little bit of history of the institution, I've, one thing I had told you, or perhaps I told you, was that I was doing a couple of research projects on the city council, formerly known as the Board of Aldermen, and then formerly known before that as both the Board of Aldermen and the Common Council of the City Council of the city of Hoyoke. So first thing I wanted to do is go back and with the help of a number of people, including the city clerk, were able to do a historical analysis of all the different people who had served in the position of President of the Hoyoke City Council. So I went all the way back to eighteen seventy-three, so we, we became a city, as you know, in eighteen seventy-three, a town in eighteen fifty, and at the original legislature of the, of the city council, we had a bicameral form of government, and so we had a common council and a Board of Aldermen. Now, at the time, the Board of Aldermen from eighteen seventy-three until the current charter, which is in effect today, was adopted in eighteen ninety-six, we had a Board of Aldermen made up of seven members, which was led by the mayor at the time, who was the effective head of the Board of Aldermen. So, and there was one, the Board of Aldermen at that time was made up of one representative from each of the seven wards. So I, in, in thinking about who was the President of the Board of Aldermen, I really didn't start per se with eighteen seventy-three, because that was basically the mayor, and I really thought of what is the modern-day city council slash Board of Aldermen. So also, as you know, the common council had twenty-one members to it comprised of three counselors from each of the seven wards, and at that time, the common council was led by a President of the common council. Now, in, so from basically the first approximately twenty-two years of the city, there were no at-large seats at all in, in the Hoyoke government, which is kind of interesting, and what I wanted to point out is, there was a number of people that served as President of the common council until eighteen ninety-three, so in eighteen ninety-three, we had a Board of Aldermen that actually began with its own President, independent of the mayor, and so for a couple of years till the last few years before the full charter change, there were four people to serve in that position, but we were still a bicameral legislature, if you could imagine now, you know, seven and twenty-one, so twenty-eight people in the legislature of Hoyoke. Now, in eighteen ninety-seven, we begin the current unicameral form of the legislature, and so Arthur French, an at-large counselor, is the first President of the Board of Aldermen of what we have today, know today as in this chamber, as the Board of Aldermen. Now, what's interesting is, we had forty-three different Presidents, to me, I'm the forty-third President of the Board of Aldermen slash City Council, but some of the people served multiple times, like you would get, they'd be the President, then they'd get voted out or wouldn't run, and then they would become the President again, and so actually thirty-two people have actually served in those forty-three different terms. So I will pass around via email that list for those that are interested to So, um, I will pass around, um, via email, uh, that list for those that are interested to have it via email, if you're interested in the history of it. And one individual who I would like to highlight tonight, who was really, um, it was very interesting that I was to come across this artifact uh, from exactly a hundred years ago, from the President of the Board of Aldermen at that time in nineteen seventeen, exactly one hundred years ago this year, was a gentleman by the name of William Hart. He was the President one hundred years ago. And he served from nineteen seventeen until he resigned the position on June third, nineteen nineteen. And the artifact I got was a gift, um, that my uncle found, and it's really remarkable that we're able to preserve this artifact, was the President's gavel from nineteen seventeen. And what is really cool about this gavel, and it has William Hart's name on it, it has the name of all of the Aldermen at the time, all twenty-one members. At this time, there were fourteen at-large, because as you recall, at this time, seven were elected to a two-year term, seven were elected to a one-year term at-large, and then all of the ward counselors were one-year term members. And it has the names of all of the Board of Aldermen. It also has the name of the mayor, the water commissioners, the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, the city messenger, um, here on this gavel. And so, uh, tonight, I gavelled this meeting in with this special gavel. And what I can tell the citizenry is... I don't know if there's any symbolism behind this, um, but a hundred years, in a hundred years, our President's gavel has dramatically shrunk. Um, hopefully the stature of the office has not shrunk accordingly.
Teddy Roosevelt.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Teddy Roosevelt. So, uh, when you got gavelled down in the good old days, you really got gavelled down. So, um, this was a, a really cool heirloom, uh, certainly I think, uh, maybe just fortuitous for me as a, as a parting gift. And I want to certainly thank my, my Uncle Peter, uh, for getting me this, finding this at, uh, in a, in a online auction, um, that he got and gave it to me, gifted it to me recently. And I wanted to share this with you. And it's, uh, it's nice to see that it's back in the old chambers after a hundred years, in the hands of another President. So, um, that's a cool artifact. Last meeting, we also talked about a couple other cool things. Um, we talked about, and Counselor Tolman and I were reminiscing about, he also has one, and I'm sure Counselor McGivern does too. We talked about at the last meeting, the City Counselor badges, that, and anybody's welcome to come take a look at it. When you became a counselor in the City of Hoyok, you received a badge, and it has your name with the city emble. So if you have one, Counselor Lopez is a veteran a long time, so he would have one of these. Uh, unfortunately, they don't give these out anymore. That's a tradition we should restart.
Can we get Ryan to go over there to the place in Chicagueno and get those?
Yes, yes, actually he should.
I think we should do that. We should also, I don't wanna make any jokes about the size of your gavel, but maybe get you a normal-sized gavel because, uh, that's a small gavel.
It is a small gavel. I'll treasure it just the same, but, uh, it is an awfully small gavel. So, the next President, give him the supersized version. But, uh, I thought I would show you that, which is a cool little artifact. The other thing, that was another trapping of the office, which I don't know how many, uh, of the counselors slash Aldermen have had one of these, but Aldermen were actually issued their own license plate, Board of Aldermen of the City of Hoyok.
Wow.
And so we were talking about those. So that's a cool heirloom. And then the last one, not really particularly related to the Board of Aldermen, but a cool City of Hoyok artifact that I just thought you might like get a kick out of, was that I also came across, because I do collect a lot of historic, historic things of Hoyok, was I happened to come across a fiftieth anniversary of the City of Hoyok souvenir badge. And this medal was, um, given out in nineteen twenty-three to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary of Hoyok becoming a city. Um, and as a matter of fact, I also have a cool picture of former Mayor Cronin wearing a medal. It's probably not this exact one, because there are a number of these that were issued, um, at the time. But this, this particular souvenir badge, uh, was given out to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary of Hoyok becoming a city. So I'll leave that out after the meeting as well. So, some cool Hoyok history stuff. As you know, um, you love this institution as much as I do, and we have this amazing history. And, uh, uh, so, a lot of, a lot of great memories, a lot of, a lot of great history has taken place in this room. Counselor Graney.
Out of curiosity, Mr. President, what year and who was the first woman City Counselor? Do you have that information at all?
Bonnie Baker, was it?
Um. I actually do know that. And hold on, I have to go to the cheat sheet. I wish I could memorize all these things. Um. I guess I thought I had this in my cheat sheet. Sorry, Mr. President. That's okay, that's okay. Um.
I'm just curious to find out when Hoyok joined the bandwagon, that's all, you know?
Yeah, um. And her name is escaping me, but it was in the nineteen twenties, I can tell you that. And, um. As a matter of fact, she ran for mayor against, uh, Fred Burnham. She was, she was not successful, but she did attempt to become the first mayor. She lived up in, uh, the street that's about one block up from the Wisteria Hearse, and her name is escaping me, but I will get you her name for the next meeting.
That's interesting, in nineteen twenties.
Yeah, she was, she was at, in the nineteen twenties, it was about nineteen twenty-seven-ish, I think, was when she was elected, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Again, in those days, because, um, you were still only elected to a one-year term. And, um, we didn't switch to two-year terms until nineteen thirty-six. Um, but, yes, I will look, I will look up her name, I can't, uh, I feel bad, I can't remember it. But, uh, she was a remarkable woman, uh, quite, quite a history, and she, she published nationally on a lot of different things. Um, and she actually had a national journal of her, of her own right.
Elizabeth Town?
Thank you, thank you, that's it. Elizabeth Town, yeah. Yeah, thank, okay. Elizabeth Town is the answer.
Did he Google that?
He must have. Yeah. So Elizabeth Town. Our first woman, uh, Alderman. Okay, great. So that was basically what I had for, uh, the President's Report, I believe. I don't think I had anything else extra. Oh, other than that, I had, um, the Puleyapool Committee. I just was not able to make all the meetings, um, and they are meeting in earnest. So Counselor Bresnahan is, uh, my appointee. I just wanted to give you a heads-up of that to the Puleyapool Committee representing the City Council. And, um, other than that, I think that wraps up, unless there's any question for President stuff. I know we do, oh, Counselor McGivern?
Not a question, Mr. President, but I, I think a fact that I always found interesting is the first Hispanic elected municipal, municipal official in the state is sitting in this room.
Yes, he is. That's a, that's a great Counselor Lopez, yes. That has been well-written about, absolutely, yes. Nineteen ninety-one?
Yep.
Yes, nineteen ninety-one. So, good for you, Counselor Lopez, and, and you've had a fantastic career, and, and we're once again lucky to have you, and hopefully we'll have you yet again for another two-year term coming up. Um, I know you're running for reelection, and we wish you the very best as, as everyone else in the room. So, uh, on that note, I will recognize Counselor Roman, who has an announcement.
Yes, thank you, colleagues, and I apologize. Uh, before this, I want to applaud the Neighborhood Association, speaking about local elections and the residents down in South Hoyok and Nueva. And we just held a very respectful and amazing mayoral preliminary forum. All four candidates attended. That's available online for constituents. It was about an hour long, and it was an amazing event. Um, but this weekend in South Hoyok, I brought you all the flyers last time, I apologize. I rushed out of there to be here on time. Uh, I will get you the cards. This Saturday is the Second Annual Taste of South Hoyok Festival. You are all invited to attend. Uh, this year, the Taste of South Hoyok Festival, and it's on our agenda, we're honoring the Hoyok, Hoyok, uh, Holy Greek Orthodox Church, is celebrating its centennial, one hundred years in South Hoyok. Um, and Laca de Familias is turning twenty, Nueva's turning thirty-five. The Hoyok Puerto Rican Hot Dog Cart has been there for ten years, and La Pecadaria has been there for ten years as well. We have amazing food, uh, food from all culinary delights, all cultures and races and backgrounds. Dan Yankee's Barbecue Food, Dean Tex Culinary Department, uh, Puerto Rican food, of course. We have Indian food this year, hamburgers, hot dogs, it's a good time for the family. The youth zone's at Carlos Vega Park, but I would invite all of my colleagues, um, on the main stage at nine, nine-thirty, just like last year. We do a press conference, and all, all of these citations tonight. Um, I know Counselors McGivern was there last year, Leahy, Lopez, Tolman, Graney. I saw the works there all day, it's nine AM to nine PM, you are all invited to attend. Um, and furthermore, this year as a new component, there's a theater show going on. This weekend, we're bringing an off-Broadway theater cast from Chicago, and there's a pop-up theater down on Main Street in the Mercado. So if anyone from the public or you all would like to come, um, my gift to you as a counselor, I'll buy the tickets, but you all, it's under fifty bucks, don't worry, we're not breaking any laws. So if anyone from the council would like to go see a good play, uh, this weekend, please come down. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Great, thanks a lot, Counselor Roman, looking forward to it. Any other announcements before we continue? Okay, great. So we're now on to reports of committees, and first up is ordinance. The Committee on Ordinance, to whom is referred an order that the City Council, order that clothing drop boxes on property throughout the city are the responsibility of the property owner to police and maintain. Any and all such clothing drop boxes shall be kept clean of any clothes and trash that might accumulate outside these boxes. Any violation of this ordinance shall be culpable by a fine of up to twenty-five dollars. It should be noted that all property owners who allow these drop boxes on their property should be in communication with the owners of these boxes to prevent any ice swords in the neighborhoods of Hoyok. Recommend that this order be adopted. Um, all, this is recommended for adoption by all five members of the Ordinance, uh, Committee. And it would be noted that, um, after review of the Law Department and the Ordinance Committee, um, there is an extensive ordinance, uh, in place, uh, for your approval um, that was submitted to you in your packets. Uh, on that, I would ask Counselor Bacon for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to receive and pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading on adoption of the committee report, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had, uh, two or three meetings on this particular ordinance, and we received a lot of input, feedback from various departments. And as a result, um, as the President mentioned, it is a fairly comprehensive ordinance. We mirrored it along with some matters related to disposing of refuse. We did put in a little bit more robust fine, uh, because it has been a persistent problem in various neighborhoods. And we did limit a maximum of two per property. Other than that, I'll yield to the maker of the order, which is Counselor Graney.
Uh, yeah, the reason I filed this, this order is, um, it's become problematic in the city. A lot of boxes around the city, they seem to have, uh, you know, clothes that are outside, that are, you know, thrown around the area. People are using the boxes for things that they shouldn't be using them for. And I thought it would be good to clean up this, uh, this ordinance, so not only the people that are in the city recognize it, but also the owners of these properties that, uh, are allowing these boxes to be on the property are, are in contact with the people who put the boxes, uh, out there, and that, uh, the communication is, is, is open between, between the city and, uh, and the, uh, the owners of the boxes to keep them clean. Uh, most of the boxes, from what I understand, are for worthy causes, and, um, that's all well and good as long as it, as long as it's kept clean and are not ice swords in the neighborhood.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, as co-sponsor of this order too. Um, uh, after Counselor Graney and I had spoken about this, I, I stopped and talked to a, a, a truck driver that was picking up one of the boxes, and he was just saying that, uh, nine out of ten of these boxes that he picks up throughout the course of the week, people are generally using them as trash cans, and it's, it's absolutely disgusting for him to go through it. Um, so I, I, I like that, and I also want to commend the Ordinance Committee for, uh, for, uh, for making a strong ordinance on this. I think that the responsibility needs to be shared from whoever the nonprofit is that's having these, so the property owner who's getting the tax benefit for this. Um, uh, so I just wanted to once again applaud the Ordinance Committee, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. Item number seventeen B is also a report of the Committee on Ordinance, to whom is referred an order that section two-dash-one-fifty-seven of the City of Ord-, City Ordinance is be amended as followed in the bold italicized text. And, um, "In the case of the absence, vacancy, or disability of the city solicitor, or in the case of the failure of the City Council to confirm the city solicitor under section thirty-four of the Charter, the most senior assistant city solicitor in number of years of continuous service to the city shall act as the city solicitor and head of the Law Department for a period of time not to exceed ninety days. If the senior assistant city solicitor shall have acted as a city solicitor for at least ninety days, then he or she shall be removed from that acting position immediately, and no other member of the department may be eligible to serve in that capacity on an acting basis." Recommend that the order be adopted, and it comes to us by all five members of the Ordinance Committee.
So, motion to pass the first reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and our President was the maker of the order. Um, you have heard the exact language of the order, and the effect that it did have as a practical matter was that we had our city solicitor appointed prior to adopting this ordinance tonight, which was really the desired intention, that we should always have a city solicitor in place. So I think, um, otherwise it speaks for itself.
Yep. Okay. All right. Uh, if there's no other discussion, uh, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is on adoption of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine? Bartley? Bartley? Oh, I'm sorry, dear, I don't think your mic is on. Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change.
Mr. President, can we suspend rules and take up seventeen D, C, and D as a package, please?
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to take up items seventeen C and seventeen D as a package, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number seventeen is a report from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom is referred an order that the Ordinance Committee and Law Department establish, um, and look into a new ordinance for the solicitation and panhandling near intersections in the city that will not be allowed at least two-hundred feet from any intersection, schools, libraries, stores, daycare. Also that any solicitation or panhandling person or organization obtain a five-dollar permit from the council. Any medians in the city will have no loitering signs and a fine of fifty dollars for anyone without a permit. Recommend that this order be given, leave to withdraw. Item number seventeen D, also a report from the Committee on Ordinance, that any person, group soliciting money from the public or city property must obtain a permit from the Police Department prior to any solicitation. The permit shall remain in effect for a time designated by the Police Chief for up to one year, and shall be obtained at least annually. A permit fee may be charged to cover costs. Recommend that the order be given, leave to withdraw. And this comes to us by way of Counselors Bacon. year, and shall be obtained at least annually. A permit fee may be charged to cover costs. Recommend that the order be given leave to withdraw. And this comes to us by way of Councillors Bacon, Jordane, Bartley, and Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the motion will be to receive the, and adopt the committee report.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee reports and give them leave to withdraw. Under discussion, Councillor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as we are all aware, this has been a discussion that's been going on now for well over a year, and the problem has only increased and become more pervasive throughout the city in the past year. However, we're running into a number of legal concerns as we're bumping into freedom of speech issues, um, as well, um, as trying to balance these public safety, public moving freely in the public way matters on this complex issue. Um, for those reasons, um, I, as the maker of one order, and Councillor Lopez is the maker of the other, agreed to give them leave to withdraw so that we can take a different approach to this matter. I'm happy to say that I've received, um, a number of constructive inputs from people at my forum meetings out in Ward Five and from other areas of the city that include such things as signage and encouraging people to support local charities rather than giving money directly to the people that are standing in the street. Also, as part of our research, um, I would note, for the benefit of my colleagues and our, um, Police Department, that we already have an ordinance on the books that prohibits anybody walking into traffic to take money from somebody in a vehicle. That was on the books long before we ever started to have any discussions about the current-day panhandling situation. It is an enforceable ordinance, and it is, I believe, if I remember correctly, subject to a fifty-dollar fine. So in that regard, because that is one of the more recent reported problems, uh, we do have the ability to affirmatively enforce that ordinance, which has been longstanding on our books. And, um, so this is a matter that we still need to address and, uh, work to find balance in our communities so that people feel comfortable and unintimidated in the public spaces and in our retail and shopping areas, as well as people having their freedom of speech. So, um, for, speaking for myself, I know I'll continue to work on it, and I know there's a lot of interest on the council to continue to work on this as well.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate, uh, at this time for us to ask the solicitor for, to, to research language anywhere around the state or in the country that is legal, that will stand up, uh, to, because this is a problem that definitely has to be addressed in the city of Hoyoke. So if, there must be some legal language somewhere in some community that's acceptable, that does not violate people's First Amendment rights. I don't know.
Thank you, if I may, through the chair. President, um, there has been a lot of research done, and part of the problem is that there's a lot of current legal activity on this very issue, and there have been a number of laws passed for, at least in one example, for another reason, aimed at a completely different matter, but impacts upon this particular issue in a way that I believe was unintended, but nonetheless has been brought to bear. So in some instances, or in at least one instance, it may require a modification to the law, uh, because of an interpretation that came up through a various, a different path. And so, it's complex, um, but I do feel that there has been a lot of research done, and I know that, um, our Law Department is happy to share a number of links to a variety of research papers, and I know there has been extensive, uh, research done, um, in this regard. Um, and right now, we're advised that we should take a break, um, we can do some things around signage, um, educating the public, and so I think we should do the things we can do, and wait till some of the other things work their way through the system, um, and perhaps through, through our state delegation pursue some amendments, but, you know, that remains to be seen.
One, one other quick question that I, I may ask, and I don't know if I could get a legal opinion on it. If one of these individuals that is soliciting out there, and I've seen them on the medians and everywhere else, if one of these individuals gets hurt or injured, is the city liable for that, and could we be facing lawsuits, multi-thousands of dollars of lawsuits from these individuals if somebody gets hurt while they're doing this? I, I have a problem with that if, if, if that happens.
I don't know.
Excuse me. Any other thoughts, discussion on this item? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the committee report recommendations, which is to give the two items leave to withdraw? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. There were no other committee reports for this meeting, which now brings us to the motions, orders, and resolutions section of the meeting, leading off with item twenty-four. Thank you. Item number twenty-four is an order introduced by Councillor Bacon that a sign "Slow" with a wheelchair symbol be posted near five thirteen Whitney Avenue Apartments, so drivers will be made aware of a person in the area using a wheelchair near the roadway.
Um, motion to refer to ordinance?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive. Refer to ordinance. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-five is introduced by Councillor Bacon, that trim-low tree branches at the end of Cypress Road and Southampton Road, and at the end of Sequoia and County Road, this is a constituent request for safety reasons.
A motion to receive and adopt and refer to DPW, please?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt and refer to the DPW. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Just one second. Item number twenty-six is introduced by Councillor Bacon, that a safety evaluation and improvements be made to reduce the likelihood of drivers traveling into the yards of two-eight-eight and two-nine-two Westfield Road from Westfield Road.
Um, motion to receive and refer to DPW and the engineer for a safety evaluation, and can we copy it to Public Safety Committee?
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, um, adopt, refer to the superintendent slash city engineer, as well as send a copy to the Public Safety Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Mr. President, I just want to note that in that area of road, there's lines in the road, but then the lines end, and the feeling in the neighborhood is that people are probably using the lines as their place in the road, and then when it ends, they are inclined to continue to go straight rather than follow the curve, so.
Sure.
That's their concern.
Very good. Item number twenty-seven is ordered that a sign "Blind driveway" be placed near three-ninety-seven Mountain Road.
Um, receive, can we receive and adopt, or do we need, I don't think we need an ordinance for that.
No, I think it's just an informational sign.
Receive and adopt and refer to DPW?
Okay. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Item number twenty-eight is introduced by Councillor Bacon, that a horse sign be added to the pole number fifty on Mountain Road.
A motion to receive, adopt, and refer to DPW?
Second. I'm assuming this is a horse crossing?
Well, it, it's just a symbol. Um, on Mountain Road, there are two horse farms, and you've heard me for the last two years talking about speeding on that road. There was one horse farm, now there are two horse farms.
Oh, okay.
And, um, there's a lot of cutting through and, like, the blind driveway issue out there. And you'll see some of the homes out there are very close to the road, too.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
So motion on the floor has been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number twenty-nine is, uh, introduced by Councillor Bartley. The City Council invite in the new PVTA Administrator Sandra Sheen to a future DGNR committee meeting to discuss the bus and transit service in and around Hoyoke. Ms. Sheen previously worked for the Greater Hartford Transit District as Director of Grants and Contract Administration.
DGNR, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive twenty-nine and refer to the DGNR committee. Any discussion of that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty is introduced by Councillor Bartley, that the city remove a handicap parking at twenty-seven dash twenty-nine John Street, placard number P-one-four-five-zero-zero-nine-six-one. The resident no longer lives at this address.
Ordinance, please.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Refer to ordinance. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Item thirty-one, we already took care of, so now we're on to item thirty-two. Thirty-two is introduced by Councillors Leahy and McGee, that the city should repair or replace the sidewalks on North Hampton Street. Could I be added as a co-sponsor? Absolutely. Thank you. Adding Councillor Jordane as a co-sponsor on this.
I was thinking, uh, receive, adopt, and send to the mayor and, uh, the superintendent of the Public Works.
Sure.
Mr. President, I'd like to be added to that, too, and I also have a question.
Adding Councillor Graney as a co-sponsor, and, um, you have a question, Councillor Graney?
North Hampton Street's a long street. From where to where? The entire distance, or?
Yeah. Uh, so I was, to answer your question, um, at first, I wanted to, um, use the community block grant money, and we talked to Councillor Bartley, then also calling the Community Block Grant Office, uh, that can't be used for sidewalks. Um, if you, um, if you take a walk, uh, to which we did, my family and I, uh, from one side of, uh, North Hampton Street, all the way down to the other, uh, Route Five, uh, the sidewalks for most, uh, in most cases are in deplorable shape, and we're taking care of sidewalks throughout the community, throughout Hoyoke. We should be taking care of, uh, this major public access road.
Okay. Any other discussion of this? Councillor Tomlin?
If I could be added onto that, I, I had just talked to a constituent that lives up on North Hampton Street between, uh, West Madison and Lindbergh, and there's an area there that's really bad, um, tripping area, um, on that street. I'm sure many people were, but, uh, the actually tree roots are underneath it, and it's tearing up, in a lot of places, the, the trees are, the roots are tearing up the sidewalks, and it's, uh, especially if somebody's in a wheelchair, people are running or walking. It's a hazard, and we hate to have somebody, uh, you know, fall really and get hurt and, uh, sue the city because it wasn't taken care of.
Yep. Adding Councillor Tomlin as a co-sponsor, and I, on the topic of North Hampton sidewalks, I would be remiss if I don't give compliments to the mayor, um, who was very helpful to me last year in getting the section from Saint Jerome Cemetery over to Sargent Street replaced, and I know all the neighbors in all those homes there were absolutely thrilled when those were replaced. A lot of those were ripped apart with, uh, tree roots and all kinds of things, so certainly he was, uh, instrumental in helping to get that taken care of, so that was extremely, uh, extremely appreciated. Uh, so this order, uh, has Graney, Tomlin, Jordane, McGee, Leahy as co-sponsors, that the city repair or replace sidewalks on North Hampton Street.
Add my, I thought I had my name.
Adding Councillor Bartley as well, David Bartley, uh, to this order.
Thank you.
Yep. And, um, receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That is the motion on the floor, is to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty-three is introduced by Councillor McGee, ordered that the Charter and Rules Committee review and offer suggested rule changes to the City Council rules for the year's, uh, makeup. I, I think you mean for next year's makeup, right? Yeah, yeah. Um, for next year's friendly amendment to add the word "next" on front of "years," next year's makeup, i.e. that the subcommittee will be made up of three members, not five. Can I be added as a co-sponsor to this?
Yep.
You know, um, I actually forgot.
Thank you, please, Lisi as well. We were actually talking about that last week, so, perfect.
Adding Councillors, uh, Councillor Lisi as a co-sponsor, adding Councillor Bacon as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing this, because I forgot to file this order.
I thought I had filed something like this.
You may have at one point. I, I forget, yeah, but, um, this is a great order, and it's certainly a conversation we should start having now, so folks can be off and running for next January. Um, but I would definitely be of the opinion, I think we need to think about going from five to three in light of the smaller council, but we'll have that committee, you know, we'll have that discussion, I'm sure, on committee. Councillor, under discussion, Councillor McGee.
Yeah, that was just one example.
Yeah.
I could give a list off. I, I just want the committee to, in essence, go through all the rules, and then offer up suggestions on pretty much everything. There might be rules that we just leave absolutely alone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, something like this, you might not have three members, you might still keep five. It's just to go through it all, and then offer it up for the full board to then discuss it, and then follow our orders accordingly, just to get it going and, and get the process started.
Yeah, and, and again, I would remind people that they need to readopt the rules every two years anyways, so it's a good exercise to, to review. I will say that you would be remarkably surprised if I showed you rulebooks from the nineteen-fifties, the nineteen-forties. Some of these rules that we have, these have been around for seventy, eighty years. It's exact identical. It's remarkable how we have preserved probably three-quarters, if not eighty percent of the rulebook is identical. That's a, that's a pretty cool little, uh, artifact, but, uh, I think we have sixty-six rules right now currently, um, all, all meaningful in, in, in many ways, so, but yeah, it's good to have all of that reviewed.
Did you get my name on there as a co-sponsor?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep, I got, uh, co-sponsors McGee, Jordane, Lisi, Bacon.
Can I be added to that?
And Councillor Leahy.
Author's expression. Thank you.
Certainly. And the motion on the floor is to send item number thirty-three over to the Charter and Rules Committee. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? So moved. Next up is item number thirty-four, which is introduced by Councillors Roman and Lisi.
Mr. President, if I may to expedite?
Sure.
I, I want to take up thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and fifty-one, please.
Second. Thirty-four through thirty-seven and item fifty-one?
Yes, please.
Okay. So motion on the floor is to set, to take items thirty-four through thirty-seven as well as item number fifty-one as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Let's just get our house in order over here and I'll be right with you. Thank you, sir. Don't need that one just yet. And, okay, let us begin. Thirty-four introduced by Counselor Roman. Order that the city of Hoyoke zoning ordinance, section seven point one oh, be amended to allow medical marijuana cultivation processing facilities in IG and IP zones and allow off-site medical marijuana dispensing in BCB, EBG, BH, and BL. Number thirty-five introduced by Roman. Order that arts and industry overlay district be expanded southward, allow the first and second level canals towards I thirty-three to include all industrial zone properties along Commercial Street and eastward to include all industrial zones along Main and Clemente Streets.
I was supposed to be on that one as well.
Okay. I think Counselor Lisi is a co-sponsor to thirty-five. Thirty-six introduced by Roman. Lisi. Ordered that zoning laws of South Hoyoke be changed as proposed. The current zoning laws proposed would be, would allow for increased business industrial and residential homeownership growth. Is there supposed to be an attachment to that?
Yeah, there's supposed to be three. I sent it to Irma, three proposed ordinance zone changes.
Just so you know, those aren't here.
Okay.
Just FYI.
I didn't know if it referred to thirty-five.
Sure. Item number thirty-seven is introduced by Counselor Roman. That the city of Hoyoke through ordinance establish a police commission, a five-member commission, three appointed by the mayor, two by the council, et cetera, et cetera. I will tell you that we've had determination previously, God bless you, that we have to have this by charter change, which the council has passed numerous times and has been vetoed. And just to also FYI, that the council put a referendum question on the ballot back at least ten years ago and the public voted for a police commission. So I pass those two things along to you. So it may, just FYI, you're requesting an ordinance change? You may be looking at a, in fact, I think you'll be looking at a charter change and so you may want to talk with the mayor if that's something he's willing to do. So just to give you a heads up on that. So proposals to send, okay, so we got thirty-four's in the package. Fifty-one is also introduced by Councillors Roman and Lisi. That the city council adopt a rent control ordinance for the arts and industrial overlay zone and other zones as appropriate in order to protect current residents from being displaced as new residential commercial tenants begin to seek out space in our city center. Just be aware, yeah, we sent it to ordinance, but be aware there's a ballot requirement for that. And rent control has, was on the ballot back in the seventies. It was defeated. So you'd have to do rent control on the ballot. There's a state law relative to rent control. So just make sure you're aware of that. Motion on the floor is to send all of these to the ordinance committee. Any discussion? Hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And this moves us up to item number thirty-eight. Introduced by Counselor Roman. That the city of Hoyoke Elections Commission explore and hold public hearings and research the cost of holding early voting for all municipal elections. I assume you mean the Board of Registered Voters?
Yes.
Okay. Mot, friendly amendment to change the word Elections Commission to the Board of Registered Voters. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Under discussion, Counselor Roman.
Yes, thank you. And I've already reached out to our city clerk and informed her that I was going to file this order. I just thought that the city did such a great job at the last state and national level elections for early voting and I really applaud the whole team there. I think it's a disservice and I'd just like to explore the cost factor, see if we can make or implore the state legislature to really make early voting for all elections. I thought it was such a good and helpful and useful tool, so I've already communicated that to our city clerk just to explore if we can get a study to see what that cost analysis would be for the city to offer it all the time and see if we can make it work in the future.
Is it something that we can, we'll check the cost, of course.
Yes, exactly.
But is it something that a law change would be required in order to do it first? I believe so, right?
Yes. Just explore the cost. We have the data and then we can.
And then you can give that to Counsel, Representative Vega or Senator Humison, okay? Okay. All right, very good. So you're asking that we send it over to the Board of Registered Voters?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the Board of Registered Voters. Any other discussion? Hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number thirty-nine is also introduced by Counselor Roman. That the police department create and establish a written job description for the Hoyoke School Resource Officers in the public schools.
Receive and send to the police chief?
Do you want to get a copy back to public safety, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the police chief requesting a copy back to public safety of his findings. Under discussion, Counselor Roman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, committee members. This actually comes out of discussion from the joint committee. We've had that before us. There's actually two items tabled there. We requested a job description. There doesn't exist one for the two school SRO officers. And last school year, there was thirty-eight Hoyoke Public School students who were arrested, the youngest being twelve years old. So we're just trying to create some clarity, so the hope is that if there's a set job description, you know, we can know then what the officers are required to have and train. So I think it'd be a benefit to have.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Take up as a package forty, forty-two, and I believe that's it.
Okay, forty, forty-two?
Yes.
Motion is to suspend the rules to take forty and forty-two as a package. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number forty and forty-two both come to us by way of Counsel Roman. Order that the city council invite in the Hoyoke Trinity Greek Orthodox Church to receive a proclamation in honor and celebration of their one-hundredth anniversary in the city of Hoyoke. And item number forty-two introduced by Counsel Roman, that the city council invite in in La Cede Familia in order to receive a proclamation in celebration of their twentieth anniversary in the city of Hoyoke.
Receive and adopt?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt. Any discussion? Hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I actually have a weird request. I got overzealous, so forty-one I have to remove myself, actually. So I'm hoping that one of my colleagues will step up. I actually, it's a conflict of interest. I work for Nueva.
Sure.
I'm happy to offer it. We've discussed it.
Yep. So, that's no problem. Let me just read it. Introduced by Counsel Roman. Order that the city council invite the Board of Directors of Nueva Esperanza into receive a proclamation in honor and celebration of their thirty-fifth anniversary in the city of Hoyoke. Removing Counsel Roman as a sponsor adding Councillors McGee, Leahy, Valentin, Tomlin, Jordan, in support of this motion to recognize Nueva for their thirty-fifth year in the city of Hoyoke. Under, and for the purposes of this discussion, Counsel Roman will not be participating or voting on this matter since, I believe he's the director of the program. Under discussion, I'll recognize first Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I, matter of fact, I really want to thank Counsel Roman for inviting us all to sign on some of these orders. And I wish I saw that and should have got on this earlier because actually, is it thirty-five years ago? That's one of my first mail routes was down in South Hoyoke in nineteen eighty-two when I first started. So I knew the area, I knew a lot of the people that started it and be glad and happy to sign on for that and wish you all the best.
Okay, any other discussion? We wish Nueva Esperanza all pass. Congratulations as well as best of luck for the future. All in favor of adopting this?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number forty-three introduced by Counsel Roman. Order that the city council Charter and Rules Committee explore the committees of the city council in comparison to other municipalities with similar-sized councils to see if there's any opportunity for streamlining and/or expansion of the current council.
Charter and rules.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to Charter and rules. Any discussion? Hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules, item forty-four and forty-eight as a package?
Okay.
Second.
Can I be added on those as well?
Sure. As soon as I get to them, I will. This is forty-four and forty-eight. Is this forty-four through forty-eight?
Through.
Okay. All right, great. Motion is to suspend the rules to take up.
Can I be added on to those, please? If, sorry with the.
Yep. Let me just go through this. Motion is to suspend the rules to take up forty-four through forty-eight as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-four introduced by Counselor Roman and all the way through forty-eight is all originally introduced by Counsel Roman. Order that the Superintendent Dr. Zright attend a joint committee of the city council and school committee and present an update on the benchmarks for the turnaround plan and, and/or an updated turnaround plan report. Forty-five, order that the city council explore office space and open rooms for council members to have office space in city hall. Forty-six, order that the mayor include in the FY eighteen budget a second position of second administrative assistant to the city council. Forty-seven, order that the city human resources department provide demographics of the municipal government workforce be provided. What is the diversity rate compared to the city population, relevant labor market? The purpose is to work with the administration, the HR department, to identify where workforce does not adequately reflect the diversity of the city of Hoyoke. Forty-eight is that the school department submit a two thousand seventeen school yearbook breakdown, reporting all teaching staff, what cities they reside in, a second report on the demographic breakdown of the two thousand seventeen district teaching staff. Furthermore, that the school department provide a separate list of all school systems, leadership teams, what cities they reside in. Leadership team shall include superintendent, chief academic officer, chief of strategy and turnaround, chief of family and community engagement, chief talent officer, chief of pupil services, chief finance and operations officer, director of secondary education and pathways, executive director of schools.
Mr. President?
Item number, and that concludes it. And Counsel Graney?
If it's, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to forty-eight if I could.
Okay.
To include all administrative positions, not only the ones that are named.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So amendment is leadership team, which includes those and all administrative positions. Second.
Aye.
Is this going to be just at the headquarters or throughout the whole city?
Whole district. Well, the principals, obviously, those are, those are public record. They're out there.
Is a secretary an administrative position, though?
No, I don't think so. I'm talking about administrators in the, the professional administrators. They're all professionals. But I'm talking about the, you know, like the.
Leadership.
Superintendent, assistant superintendent, you know, leadership, yeah. All administrator, or administrators out there that.
All administrator positions.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Counsel LeBrogue.
Yeah, with the maker of the order, if I can be added to number fifty?
Fifty's not up yet.
Okay.
We're only up to forty-eight.
Okay, when we get there.
Forty-four to forty-eight.
Thank you.
I had some requests for co-sponsors. I just want to make sure.
I just wanted forty-four.
You, okay, Leahy wants on forty-four, so adding Counsel Leahy to number forty-four.
Graney forty-four and forty-eight, please.
Okay, adding Graney to forty-four and forty-eight.
As a motion, I'd like to receive and then, you know, send these off to their proper, you know, designated locations with forty-four and forty-eight receiving a copy to the joint committee of the city council and school committee.
Okay, Counsel Vacan?
I just have a question through the president to the maker relative to number forty-six. We've just been known more recently with the tight budget things for cutting positions than recommending adding positions. I'm just interested to understand the thinking.
Counsel Roman?
Yes, so forty-six goes hand in hand with forty-five. I've had a number of constituents who show up here to city hall to find me. And I, Ryan's already very taxed with his current position and job. But in my city council, we're currently, as we look at our body next time, I was looking at comparable cities. Springfield has thirteen city councils, they have three full-time staffers. They have a full-time researcher. They, and granted, our city size is, yes, small, but I know, I need the help. We need the help. And I would like to see Ryan get some assistance as well. And as our current committees meet, it's difficult for him to have all of the workload on himself. And so I was looking at comparable cities in the region that have thirteen city council members looking forward, but even us right now at fifteen, there should be an extra level of support. So what I was looking at is in relative, relative to two council positions being cut and saving that ten thousand dollar stipend of twenty thousand, that's half of a salary right there, that we can then potentially use. But what's going to happen with that twenty thousand dollars? It's going to get eaten into the general fund and be used somewhere else. I would like to see that dedicated towards a position within our body to help us so we get more help on the committee level, on the research level, and on the constituent service level. If we had a designated office space outside of these desks where I could come in to do work or research and have another administrative assistant to assist us, I just think that that would be a benefit to the constituents of the city of Hoyoke. I know lots of residents that either show up to the clerk's office or the mayor's office looking for us. And so that was my intent, to just explore that opportunity, to see if we can make it work in the budget. And knowing that we're cutting twenty thousand from this body, I would like to see that allocated hopefully towards another full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Counsel Vacan?
He did answer my question, but I would just ask on the voting, it'd be broken out because I can't support that particular one. Thanks.
All right. Removing forty-six from the package. We serve, we generally operate under unanimous consent on those things, so.
Mr. President, what's the motion on the floor?
Was originally forty-four to forty-eight as a package. We haven't gotten to motions yet.
Okay. Because some of these aren't adopt.
Correct.
I don't think any of them are adopt.
We shall see. Forty, forty-six is now.
Oh, I apologize, not adopt, just send to their proper committees.
Okay, committees.
I apologize, sorry, yes.
All right.
Sorry.
So forty, forty-six is out of the package. So just for simplicity's sake, forty-four, forty-five is a package. So we've got, this is the one relative to the superintendent attend a joint committee meeting of the city council and school committee to present and update benchmarks. So motion on this one would be to send to the joint committee with a copy to the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. And then forty-five, that the city council explore office space or open rooms for council members to have office space.
That would be you, correct, Mr. President?
You could send it to me, but we could send it over to ordinance because we established the council offices by ordinance.
Okay.
Ordinance? Okay. So forty-four to joint committee with a copy to the superintendent, forty-five to the ordinance committee. All, any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-six introduced by Counsel Roman. Order that the mayor include in the FY eighteen budget, which is the current budget, a second position for second administrative assistant. Do we want to talk that one over first?
I would like to offer a friendly amendment. I want it to be FY twenty nineteen. This budget's pretty much set.
Yep.
So we get to explore it, so we can send it to the mayor with a copy to finance.
All right. Friendly amendment is to, friendly amendment is to change two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. All in favor of that change?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion on the floor is to adopt, or no, strike that, to send to finance with a copy to the mayor. And under discussion, Counsel McGivern, did you want to add anything?
No, Mr. President.
You're okay with finance with a copy?
If we're referring to finance, I'm fine, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to refer to finance with a copy to the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, let me just make sure I'm writing all these down.
Mr. President, while you're doing that, can I just make an announcement?
Sure.
Just about an hour ago, Katie Keen from Hoyoke scored her hundredth point, senior Hoyoke High School, scored her hundredth point in field hockey type.
Oh, no.
If anybody knows anything about field hockey, that's a huge accomplishment.
That is a huge accomplishment. That is a huge accomplishment, tremendous. Thank you for letting us know. Great job, Katie. All right, forty-seven. And forty-eight.
Lot of points.
Is the HR Department provide demographics of the municipal government workforce. So you wanna send this to Public Service with a copy to HR?
HR, yes, please.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to send forty-seven to the Public Service Committee with a copy to the HR slash Personnel Director. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Forty-eight is that the School Department provide us a two thousand seventeen school year breakdown reporting all the teaching staff, et cetera, et cetera, as articulated earlier, with the amendment that we add and all administrator positions.
Joint Committee with a copy to the Superintendent?
Motion on the floor is to send to the Joint Committee with a copy to the Superintendent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Let me just catch up. Okay, great. Forty-nine. Is introduced by Counselors Roman and Lisi that order that all city-owned buildings install baby changing stations in all bathrooms.
Receive and adopt, or refer to the DPW.
Second.
Can I be added on to that?
Yep. Since, I'm assuming we don't wanna go to committee, I'm just saying, do we mean having one in all the buildings, or do we mean every single bathroom? For example, here is a bathroom right behind us. Do we need to have a baby changing station installed in the City Council bathroom?
It should be in...
I just wanna make sure we understand the intent of that. Is it, do we mean, we want, we, obviously, I totally agree with you that we wanna have good access for the public and theoretically employees to have access to baby changing stations. I just wanna make sure, do we mean literally every single bathroom? For example, the mayor has a bathroom. Do we mean the mayor's office bathroom has a baby changing station? Do we mean... Yeah.
Public.
How about, you wanna just maybe qualify that to say in all public bathrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we mean, right?
Yep.
Which is a good thing.
You say public instead of all.
Yeah, so in all public bathrooms. Okay?
Interesting tidbit about those baby changing...
Which are great, I agree.
My father-in-law was the first investor. He didn't, he didn't invent this. However, the person who invented it, my father-in-law was the financial backer for those.
Did he use the gold in the streets when he thought the streets were made of gold?
That was my father, this is my father-in-law.
Oh, your father-in-law, oh, okay.
It's Leahy, yeah.
Just wanna make sure I got my Leahy history correct. All right, very good. So friendly amendment to add the word "public" before bathrooms, so in all public bathrooms. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, Counsel Roman?
Yes, this comes away of a constituent request, I've had a few, and including some of the young, single dads out there who've come into City Hall. So I think this is just a great, so I thank my colleagues for cosponsoring.
I've had to use them, so it's a good, good order. All in favor of adopting as amending and sending over to the DPW?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
We're now baby-friendly as well as business-friendly, I love that.
There you go.
What a, what a great place.
That's great. Item number fifty from Counsel Roman, that the City Council adopt a resolution calling on all state and federal education policymakers to adopt a moratorium on the high-stakes use of standardized testing so that educators, parents, and members of our communities can work together to develop an authentic assessment system that allows more time for educators to teach and better prepare students for lifelong learning.
DG, Mayor, please.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to send over to the DG and R Committee, Counsel Lisi?
Well, I'd like to add my name to it and say a few other things, but Counsel Roman had his hand up as well.
Okay, so just adding Counsel Lisi as a cosponsor. Counsel Lebron Martinez?
Yeah.
Cosponsor, okay. Adding Counsel Lebron Martinez as a cosponsor. And back to Counsel Roman for discussion.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank my colleagues for indulging me with the over fifteen orders tonight. I apologize. Had a very robust door-knocking season, so that's where all this comes from. And so I thank you all, I thought I wasn't gonna be the only one to submit so many, and I was... So I thank you all, and thank you Brett and your team for always getting my fifty emails as I'm out on the road or at one o'clock in the morning. I just wanted to file this because of his last years being the Chair of the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee, and hearing these conversations, I could tell what are the most difficult things for the teachers when I'm out there going to these, you know, open houses or speaking with our teaching staff. It's this teaching-to-a-test mentality that we have, and it's really hindering these amazing teachers. And I spend every Thursday down at Morgan School, and those kids really wanna learn, and if they're learning to a test, it's really hindering us. I know we're gonna have this discussion in committee, but that's the essence of it. I want us to talk about it in committee. But I really filed this order because I've just been hearing an increase, and even at tonight's Moro Forum, we're hearing teachers that are trying to leave our district to go to other districts or private schools because they don't have to teach to these tests. So I really, really think that this is a good conversation for our community to have. I would like to send a copy of this, of course, to the receiver. You know, love to get some other folks in to talk about high-stakes testing. You know, maybe invite the new Education Commissioner that's appointed. So I just look forward to this conversation in committee, and I thank you.
Okay, Counsel... Just one second, just one second, Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, I just wanna clarify what this order is saying in that it's asking for, that we're calling on the state and federal education policymakers to adopt a moratorium on the high-stakes use of standardized testing, meaning that we would still have the ability to use standardized tests in terms of the information that data can provide us in terms of, you know, how we're doing and performance and changes in performance. However, the high-stakes use is where salaries and district funding is attached to the performance of our students on those tests. And I think that, that is the piece that I would like to support in signing on to this order and resolution.
Do you wanna qualify that? Because it really doesn't quite say that. I know that's what you mean, but...
It does say that, and I just wanna make sure that everybody else in the room understands that because it says to adopt a moratorium on the high-stakes use of standardized tests.
But you've defined high stakes as meaning, high stakes means affecting funding, affecting people's job performance. Do you wanna define high stakes?
We could put parentheses next to that.
Well, just so, I mean, high stakes, what does that even mean? Is that gambling, is that, you know, what does that even mean? But you've defined it, I see your point.
Sure, so then how about if we, if we may, with the maker's permission, amend this to say, adopt a moratorium on the use, so striking high stakes, of standardized tests to determine...
District funding?
District funding, teacher salaries, and other forms of evaluation.
To determine, district funding... What was the other one?
Teacher's pay.
Teacher, teacher salary. Okay. Okay, great. All right, that's an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second. Under discussion of the amendment, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. So striking high stakes and then giving this more detailed explanation. And now recognizing under discussion, Counsel Graney?
And just to quickly reiterate, high-stakes testing, generally it means a prerequisite to graduate. And unfortunately, when you get a youngster that is in auto mechanics or metal fab at Dean Technical High School, their graduation depends upon a high-stakes test in English and mathematics, et cetera, et cetera, rather than in their discipline, which is auto mechanics or metal fabrication or something like that. And sometimes it prevents a kid from graduating from school even though they're not being tested in their discipline, which is completely unfair to the student, completely unfair to the school system, and completely unfair to the instructor.
Any other thoughts, comments, Counselor McGivern?
I, I think the intent of the order is clear, and I agree with it, but if you read into this order, you can apply this to teacher certification also. And I wouldn't mind if that was discussed in the, in the meetings because what teachers go through in terms of certification, their type of process is as unfair as a standardized test that we give to, many times, that we give to our students.
Yeah, we should get to learn a little bit more about this in committee, and maybe we can get some more information as to how these tests are being applied. I mean, we kinda know, we see it publicly, but there's, I'm sure, a lot more behind it that's going on that we should become more up to speed on. Counsel Roman?
I would just like to make an amendment to send this to the Joint Committee. I just got excited, so if we could have it in the Joint Committee?
Okay. Okay, amending from DG and R to the Joint Committee on the City Council and School Committee. All right, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor of sending this item as amended to the Joint Committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Great, good work on that.
Motion adjourned.
We do have a couple of last-minute late files.
Motion to adjourn.
There's three left. Late files see that the city estab... This is introduced by Counsel Jordan. City established informational signs by ordinance at various locations in the city stating, please don't donate to panhandlers, donations are harming our community, or similar language.
Will you put me in that one too, please?
Yep, and then Counsel Bacon. So one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was how to not restrict, but also to give informational signs. So I'd like to see this go to ordinance, please. So motion on the floor is to send to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Late file D introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the Police Department enforce all traffic or pedestrian laws relative to anyone soliciting in the street or on any traffic island in the city. Like to, if people would like to discuss this, that's fine. If not, I would like to just take final action on this. Counsel Barley?
Just under discussion. I was advised yesterday at the parade that it looks like we're gonna have a... The city's gonna have a code enforcement officer redeployed. So you might wanna send it to committee and have the code enforcement officer...
Great, okay. So motion is to send late, late file D to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Late file E was introduced by Counsel Leahy, and that is regarding the aforementioned Katie Keen, that the City Council give a proclamation to Hoyok High Senior Katie Keen on scoring her one-hundredth field hockey point today on September twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Motion to take, final, suspend our rules, take up final action?
Congratulations, Katie.
That's probably the quickest from action to proclamation that you've ever had.
Doing the people's work.
Okay, all in favor of suspending the rules to take up final action?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion on the floor is to adopt, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. And William Hart, one hundred years ago, wherever you're laying at this moment, wishes you well. I don't, I'll have to research that.